Called the meeting to order and begin the meeting by sharing the land acknowledgement statement. We would like to begin by respectfully acknowledging that Dufferin County resides within the traditional territory and ancestral lands of the Tiutani, Adirandaran, Anishanee, and the Anishnabis people. We also acknowledge that various municipalities within the county of Dufferin reside within the treaty lands named under the Haldeman deed of 1784 and two of the Williams Treaties of 1818 Treaty 18 and Ottawa Saga Purchase and Treaty 19, the Agestos Treaty. These traditional territories upon which we live and learn are steeped in rich indigenous history and tradition. It is with this statement that we declare to honor and respect the past and present connection of indigenous peoples with this land, its waterways, and resources. I will now ask the clerk for the roll call.
Thank you, madam. Counselor Crowman?
Present.
Counselor Gardhouse?
Present.
Counselor Garrettts?
Here.
Counselor Hall?
Present.
Counselor Hawkins?
Present.
Counselor Little?
Present.
Counselor McLean?
Present.
Counselor Mills?
Present.
Counselor Nix?
Here.
Counselor Post?
Present.
Counselor Wrench?
I'm here.
Counselor Solomon?
Present.
Counselor Taylor has provided notice. Counselor White?
Present.
And Warden Horner. Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda and any addendum? Moved by Mills, seconded by Nix. All those in favor? Any opposed? Members may declare any pecuniary interests now. Please state the interest and general nature thereof. Declarations must be verbal and in writing and can be emailed to the clerk. May I have a motion then to adopt the open session and closed session minutes of the March 13th council meeting? If there are any questions regarding the closed session minutes, we will wait until closed session. May I have that motion? Moved by Post, seconded by, who's handed? I see Gail Little. All those in favor? Carried. Proclaimations, delegations, and presentations. We are really excited today to declare April 27th to May 3rd National Volunteer Week. And I have a motion here, a declaration, whereas 24 million Canadians volunteer formally and informally, contributing nearly 5 billion hours annually, and whereas in Dufferin County, more than 3,000 individual volunteers and 200 organizations that serve Dufferin residents are registered on Volunteer Dufferin's matching portal, and local surveys show that 77% of respondents volunteer informally, 54% volunteer formally, and 32% provide unpaid care. And whereas volunteers in Dufferin County mentor youth, support those facing isolation, beautify shared spaces, and fundraise for charitable causes, and whereas volunteers continue to dedicate their time and talent to supporting families, friends, neighbors, and even strangers while also advocating for justice, equity, and inclusion, and whereas Dufferin County's volunteers come from all walks of life, individuals, families, workers, and retirees who unite to strengthen our community, and whereas the collective efforts of volunteers make Dufferin a more vibrant, compassionate, and desirable place to live, and whereas volunteers serve in diverse roles from mentoring and coaching to responding to urgent needs, advocating for meaningful causes, and fostering a sense of belonging through community events, and whereas their dedication and passion enhance social connection, improve public services, and create a safer, more inclusive, and united Dufferin County. Now therefore, I proclaim April 27th to May 3rd, 2025, as National Volunteer Week in the county of Dufferin, and encourage all citizens to recognize and celebrate the invaluable contributions of our volunteers. I would like to welcome Jennifer McCollum, Telecheck manager at Headwaters Healthcare Centre, to accept the proclamation and say a few words. Jennifer?
Thank you.
Now, is there a picture?
Maybe not. (laughter) Okay. Do we hear her? I don't think so. Hurrah. (laughter) Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, do I? Can I? Right there? Well, we need to use the microphone. Okay. Oh, if you don't want to.
Check, check. Hi. So I'm here with Christine Walker from Headwaters Communities in Action.
Hi, I just wanted to take this opportunity on behalf of Volunteer Dufferin and HCIA to accept this, and I, you know, I just wanted to say, I've been volunteering all my life, but I moved to Mono about four years ago and made the decision to, that the best way for me to get to know people in the community was to volunteer, and so I joined all sorts of activities, including the DEI Committee in the town of Mono and HCIA, and it's been really for me life-changing in this community because I've had so many opportunities to get involved and to meet people, and so I just want to, you know, I really support volunteering, and I hope that lots of people in the, in the community continue to do so.
Great. And I just want to say thank you for taking the time, honorable council members, for recognizing Volunteer Week coming up at the end of this month. Volunteer theme this year is Volunteers Make Waves, and we are hoping to make waves in all of Dufferin County. So our true ask from all of you is if you can share on your socia ls, on your websites, on however you get information out there about volunteers and the importance and the value of, of volunteers in our communities. I manage a program called Telecheck, and our program is solely based on volunteers. We do have staff, but a small team with a large team and large heart of volunteers. And on average, our monthly hours are over 5,000 hours that they provide for us, or over 5,000 calls they provide for us to, to reach out to vulnerable older adults in Dufferin County, and we couldn't do it without them. So we would love if you could share this information moving forward. I can send, probably to Michelle, information in regards to stuff that we can share out, and if you can pass that along and make waves, and we'll have pictures of multiple organizations of Dufferin County that have volunteers on them, and they're true Dufferin County people, so we'll share that with you, and if you can share that along, that would be amazing. So thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Jennifer, and we certainly appreciate all those unpaid hours that the volunteers do put in, and all the great services offered by both your organizations. So thank you.
Thank you.
Number 7.2, the Multiple Scleriosis Awareness Month is in May, and we have postponed this proclamation until the next meeting. So the next item, we're going to ask the representatives from the Dufferin Gray Pasture Committee to come forward and make a, a presentation to council. At the February 13th, 2025 meeting, council tabled a motion from Community Development and Tourism Committee regarding the proposed community pasture farm. Tonight, I'd like to welcome Mike Swiderski, Don Hargrave, and Brad Fergus from the Gray Dufferin Community Pasture Committee to share further details regarding this project. So if we could have, I guess we're seeing that you maybe want to say a few words first?
Oh, we, we will speak during the presentation.
Okay.
Is this a comfortable spot?
Right here. Yep. That's where the mic is.
Sounds good. Great. Thank you.
So I'm Don Hargrave. I'm, I'm the Chair of the Gray Dufferin Community Pasture. I'm also the Chair of the Community Pasture Association of Ontario, which is 11 community pastures. I'm a Director on the Beef Farmers of Ontario. I'm a Director on the Canadian Cattle Identification Agency, and I was newly elected to the Canadian Cattlemen's Association. So I very well fit into your volunteering position, but I do reside in Gray County, so, and I tell everybody I farm near Dundalk, which is the highest point in southern Ontario, so I am closer to the heaven than the rest of you, so. Anyways, here's our proposal in here, like, our operation, it started in 1978, our community pasture in Dundalk and, and things like that, so it's a very well-run, it's probably, being the Chair of the Ontario Pastures, I feel that the one that we operate is probably the most, most profitable pasture, and it's the most best well-run pasture, and I'm not saying, because we have a really good set of Board of Directors that work with us, and our pasture manager being Mike Swiderski, and I think his Mike is one of the very best grassland farmers in the province of Ontario, maybe of all Canada, so. Move, move the slide, please. So this is a little bit about, about the pasture. This is the Board of Directors here, so they thought they'd send the old, one of the older guys, me, to come, and then we bring along Brad Fergus, who's one of our new directors, one of the young farmers that's there, so. We also, on the board, is made up of members from the Gray Cattle, Gray County Beef Farmers, Dufferin County Cattlemen's Association, the county federations of both Dufferin and Gray, and one rep from Dufferin County and one rep from, that represents Gray County, and then we also have a patron-appointed director by the board on the committee, so there's seven Board of Directors on it. So, next slide. So here's a, a video that made, we won an award for TESSA, which is Environmental Stewardship Award, two, two years ago, or three years ago, Mike? Three years ago? Three years ago, and this is, this is the video that we had made. It's, it's about five or six minutes long, maybe?
Two and a half.
Two and a half minutes long. It's been downsized. So, you can play that, please. I'm Don Hargrave. I'm the Chairman of the Gray Dufferin Community Pasture. This is one of the largest grassland areas that is left in this part of the province. For beef cattle operations, they're virtually, all have to have some sort of grazing system to be economical. This was set up for young farmers to have an opportunity to expand their operations at home and maybe pasture their yearling cattle at, at a different location. On this pasture, I think this year, we have about 14 patrons. This is a very unique place.
I'm Mike Swiderski. I'm the manager of the Gray Dufferin Community Pasture. The combination of the, of the cattle and, and the grasslands and the, and the wooded areas, it provides a, a really unique environment that can't be duplicated without the ruminants. We don't have large herds of, of buffalo here anymore, so the, the cattle and other ruminants are a really good, modern substitute.
Land in this area is being developed. There's very little of, of good grazing land left. This piece of property supports a lot of birds, red-winged blackbirds, bobolinks, metal larks, savannah sparrows. I think there's probably 25 to 30 different species of, of birds that are in the area.
The field to the right of me is a, was a project site that we've had in the past with Bird Ecology Conservation Ontario, and what they were looking at was trying to see how successful cattle grazing lightly, quickly, early in the spring would affect the nesting of, of bobolinks.
We did a study with pollinators on grasslands. The bee, beehive keepers also have a, a site on our pasture. Cattle on grass is a good thing for the environment. If this pasture didn't exist, it'd either be the corn, soybeans, and someone else would be, be cropping it, probably for cash cropping. You know, it's a lost opportunity for some people to, to own cattle or to graze cattle. Next slide, please. So I'll introduce you to Brad Fergus. He's one of the young farmers in the area, and we did have a slight, small video made here, so Brad's gonna get, but it doesn't seem to work through your process here, so Brad will talk, talk about.
Thanks, Don. So as Don said, my name's Brad Fergus. I'm a young beef producer here in Dufferin County. I just wanted to speak on behalf of this community pasture project, just, I think it's a very beneficial project for all of Dufferin County, for all parties, I think helps, showed Dufferin County support to agriculture in the future here in Dufferin County. I think it helps for young producers to get involved and help build off each other and learn and, and move forward with agriculture. Thank you.
Next slide, please. So I, I know, I know you had this available and read through it, so I'm gonna go through this relatively quickly and try to answer some of the questions that were asked, and the illustration on the left is just sort of explaining how the grazing works. You take a, a larger number of cattle and you move them on fairly quickly to, to fresh grass on a daily or, or every couple days, and it allows that grass to recover, it allows the different wildlife and insects to move in, and really helps the carbon cycle, which is the basic grade six science to our, our left. And we have catalytic grass, defecating, yes, they do produce methane, that methane in that system is recycled after roughly 10 years and put back into that, that same cycle. Next slide, please. On the, on the left of the screen, there is a, a diagram that's explaining the difference between cropped land and, and grazed land. It was a, the SHAP test, which is a test that was developed between the University of Guelph and Omaha, it's showing that grazed land having a higher organic matter by about a percent than the average cropped land in the province, and, and that's quite remarkable because most of the cropped land is on, on the good land, and most of the grazing land is now on, on the most unproductive land across the province, and it's showing, I think, an average around 3%. In the community pasture and my farm, which is in the Riverview area, we're sitting at almost 8% organic matter, and in Dufferin County, most of the cropped land is, is sitting at around that 2%. So that grassland has a, a lot better, is in a lot better position for carbon sequestration, water holding capacity, and all the good things that, that we like. Next slide. And this is, this is, like, sort of the question was asked, you know, land just sitting idle, is that, is that a good thing for carbon sequestration? And this is kind of a scientific slide, but it's basically showing a, a study that is, has been done, which is showing that, that grazing that land versus just idle, idle land is much better for carbon sequestration, much better for biodiversity and, and everything else. Next slide. The property, the proposed community pasture will provide habitat for ground nesting birds. As it sits now, that does not happen in a, in a cropping system, there's no nesting opportunities, and as you can see, that little bird at the bottom, that is going from 1972, I believe, to where we are today, those ground nesting birds, bobolinks, sparrows, they're in high decline, and that is basically due to urban sprawl, actually tree planting, and crop farming. So this would be a great opportunity to, to stabilize that. Next slide. This is showing the, the, the diagram of it again. I'm having difficulty seeing that slide from here, but sort of that expansion, the cattle will go in around that May, out, out in October. There will be no more traffic involved in this project than what is currently being there, possibly less than the current cropping enterprise that's been happening there. The cattle will, basically, there'll be a couple cattle trucks coming in in May, and some coming in, in, in October, so no more traffic. There is a, there is a opportunity through RLP to finance the fencing infrastructure requirements that would, that would be required for this. That would add a value instantly to that property, to over, over $2,000 instant, instant increase in value. No, $200,000, thank you. That would be basically an, an instant increase in value. There will be no staff time, no, from the county or anything like that. This, our organization is, is used to doing projects like this, and there's a real upside, not only for the agriculture community, but, but the greater county, and both, both the urban population and the, and the, the rural population. There is, I have had bird ecology groups reach out looking to do research on this property, primarily the, the change from a cropping system to a pasture system, as well with that forested treat area. It's very, very unique to have pasture start in that, so they're very keen and, and hopefully excited to, to do research on, on, on the site. Next slide, please. There's several advantages to the, to the ag community. The ag community, as you know, in Dufferin County is a very robust industry, very important industry, and there is, there are several, as you can see from that slide, there's several, several pluses for, for this community. Next slide. There is several secondary uses, and of course, this would take, once, take the establishment period before this would happen, you know, bringing youth into, into, for tours in the sites, whether it's, you know, nature tours that would be quite similar to the county forest system, but only in a, actual, in a, in a grassland environment, which is, is very unique. And once again, our, our pasture committee has experienced doing these tours. We have a yearly open house on the existing Dufferin Gray pasture. It is common to have politicians, Paul, is, Paul, like, last year, we had the, the assist, the policy politician, the politicians from, they would be the, I guess, what's it called? A, they, they spent a semester with, with politicians in, in Toronto, and just, it's a, it's a very good way to get, and a great place to get people to come and see something totally different, and a great asset for Dufferin County. Next slide. So several advantages to Dufferin, Dufferin County. I think one of the main things is, it's a great opportunity for Dufferin County on the carbon sequestration side to, to put their money where their mouth is. You can talk and say, yes, this is what our businesses should be doing in Dufferin County, but unless the leadership is prepared to, 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 to just put their hand up and say, this is what we are doing as a, as a greater community, we, we think everybody should as well. Next slide. And I'm hoping there's time for questions. We would love to entertain them.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions from council? Fred?
Yes, thank you, Mike. I'd like to know a bit more about the finances. By the way, I've been on a tour of your property in Gray County. It was quite, quite educational. My, my understanding is you, you earn, you, you have to get some revenue to run this thing, and you do it by charging the weight gain of the cattle when they leave in the fall. They gain 100 pounds, you charge whatever is $100. It, financially, the current common pasture that you have, does it, is it profitable, or do you run it at cost, or do you run it at a loss?
Yeah.
Well, we went through our budgeting process last night. We had to raise our fees because our taxes and the township of Southgate have gone up and whatnot, so. I was always told when I became chairman or I became a director on the board, and this is very, from a very prominent cattlemen in Gray County, it's been Dale Pallister, and maybe some of you know him or not, and Dale says, you run this pasture like a business, and you run it to make a profit, and our idea is to make 10% above their costs again every year. And maybe I shouldn't say this, but we do have some money in the bank, and we're probably one of the only pastures in Ontario that have it. We have $160,000 in revenue, or money put in the way, and it's for improvements to our pasture and whatnot. The other thing financially about this, I'll say because I'm on the Association of Community Pastures, and we're working with Ontario Foreage Council and, and through the process of RLP, that's Resilient Agriculture Landscape Program. We have $4 million allocated to 11 community pastures in Ontario for improvements this year. Our community pastures were taken over in 1996 after the Mike Harris government downloaded it, and some of the community pastures are in, in bad shape. But the one at Gray Dufferin, through the management that we've had from the predecessors of our Board of Directors, we've always made money, and we've always improved pastures. We have a program of developing, keeping our fences. We almost got them all completed, and that was fences that were put up in 1978, and we budget $25,000 every year to fix it up. We fixed up our handling facilities and everything else, and it's all come from that. So we treat this pasture as a business, and we operate it as a business to make money.
Okay, if I could ask another question. That, that land is now cropped, is it? Is, is someone cropping that land that you're, off Highway 89?
Yes. Part, part of it, it's cropped now. Half it is. Half it's still in, in grassland, and there's a wetland area in the front corner.
Amy, what, what rent are we making from that land now? Ballpark. Are we making any money? I mean?
Through you, Chair, 30, sorry, $2,800, I think?
$2,800 a year. And what we're proposing to do, if I could ask another question, is let the common pasture have it, and the obligation is they will pay the property taxes on it. What, Amy, are there property taxes on county-owned land?
Through you, Warden, currently, there are not property taxes, but it would be a change in use, and then we would likely be taxed.
Oh, okay. And that's what this offer is, is that you can have the land as long as you pay these pending property taxes?
Yes, that would be put into the budget.
Okay, I, I think, I think that does it for me. Thank you, Janet.
John?
More of an observation than a question. You're probably aware that nearly 25 years ago, we were within five days of getting approval from the Ministry of the Environment to turn this into a landfill, and the size of the landfill would have far exceeded the requirements of Dufferin County, and we would have been importing garbage from Toronto, from York region, and a number of, of other places, and the incoming council courageously said, no, we don't want it as a landfill. Now, it's had a, quite a storied history since then, but I, I think it's ironic and, and somewhat of a beautiful story that here we are tonight, talking about its use as a pasture, as opposed to, to what it could have been.
So is an asset still owned by the Duffer, County of Dufferin, the piece of property, you still own it? So in the future, if the leasing agreement is made to us and it's renewed, if it's maintained as a pasture, that's fine, but they also, the county has, still has the options if, if we quit shipping the garbage to Michigan, as we do, we may have to have a place to put some of it. So it could be an option that comes back. It could be turned back to the Ministry of Environment. We really hope that it stays as a grassland.
And, and if I may, on, on that note, the, the community pasture currently, our fertility program for our land is municipal compost, and has been for about seven years. We put about 700 ton of municipal compost on that property in a year. It would be really great to get that from Dufferin County. That is not an option at this, so, and I know some of the municipalities- this, so, and, and I know some of the municipalities struggle with, with their sewage sludge and this is a, this is an option too. You know, the, people talk farm food to plate, well, there isn't, there, that's not the full cycle. Whether we like it or not, we may as well keep it real and, and realize that, that the cycle of life is, is beyond the plate.
Keeping it real, Phil? You're, got your hand up.
Yes, uh, thank you very much, uh, thanks, Mike and the rest of the team for a really good presentation. Uh, it's, it's long overdue. Um, I, I'm a big fan of raising cattle and pasturing and all that and, and so in the abstract, I, I support this wholeheartedly. I, I'm not going to mainly because of financial reasons. At Dufferin County, we're looking at spending a pile of money the next few years and, and these two properties are assets that we don't need and I don't think the benefits are going to be all that great. Uh, and, and I think you're, you're, you're making a great sales pitch and I think it would certainly help, um, a few people, but I think that's the first question I want to ask. I see that the current pasture supports 20 local farm families. I think it's 600 acres, is that right?
That, yes, roughly 60, 600 acres of grass, it's 700 acres with some trees, is Counselor Phillip.
So you, you can call me Phil, Mike, it's fine.
And then I would say, if, if I may, I'd say it's, it's those families, but it's also the trucking companies which are from, from Dufferin County and surrounding areas and the, the feed companies, it, so there's, there's the multiplier effect on that as well.
So my question is, how many farm families would you be supporting in Dufferin County with this land?
I think what we would do with this project here is that Dufferin County, we'd offer it to at first and if a young guy like Brad is just starting out and it's an opportunity for him to, to expand, uh, each year at our other pasture, we make sure that we add two or three new people a year to it and so I'm saying we could probably get probably 10 to 12, uh, people involved in this, because this is not a big property compared to the other, and, and I think what we're designing this pasture to be is, is it maybe a breeding heifer pasture, uh, so that they'd be able to, to put bred heifers on there and raise them to increase the size of their cowherds at home and, and give them an opportunity there. But I really encourage the next generation to start and that's why Brad's on the board and he's one of the new members. Like, we added three young guys that are under the age of 25 last year. We like to give them a hands up, give them a step up in the business, because if they're going to be involved in agriculture, this is an opportunity for them to start. I'm not saying that it's, it's, it's an, it's a too expensive for them to purchase a piece of property to start farming, so it's an opportunity for them to have a little bit of a chance to get started and get established.
And I, I would just point out, there's probably 10 to 12 farmers in this meeting right now, so we're, we're not talking, right, like when, when we say we're supporting agriculture, we're, we're not supporting a big piece of agriculture and it's one small sector and, and right now, I gotta tell you, the, that's, it's one of the best sectors to be in, right? Like, the most valuable piece of anything on my farm is a 10-day-old beef, beef calf. So it's a pretty good time to be a beef farmer, I would say, and I, I, I'm really uncomfortable with saying, yeah, we're going to support just this section of agriculture. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to ask about or address was the, the increase in property value. $200,000 sounds like a lot, I'm assuming that's the cost of the fence, more or less?
The, the fence and, and other infrastructures, yeah.
So, so, yeah, and, and so I'd point out that five years ago, I bought land for $9,000 an acre, two weeks ago, farmed down the road, sold for $26,000 an acre. So I, I don't know that we need to worry about putting up a fence to increase the, the, the appraised value of the land. I think it's doing just fine on its own. So, but I thank you guys for your presentation, it was really well done and if it, yeah, if it had come a couple of months earlier, I would have been a lot happier two meetings ago.
Thank you, Phil. Uh, Chris, please.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, so they will be responsible for, for all the work, like I've been on the land a, uh, quite a bit, it's, there's a lot of ruts and stuff, so I assume they're going to be responsible for all that, that grading and improvements?
That is correct, we, that is, that is absolutely correct, yes.
Just, just so you know, Mike, I don't know if you're aware, there's, uh, John touched on it, but as part of the studies that were completed 25 to 30 years ago, there's a large number of wells on the property that would need to be abandoned. Uh, I'm estimating 40 to $100,000 worth, um, so just, just for you, plus one of them is a provincial groundwater monitoring network well, so you're not going to be able to abandon it and you're probably going to have to protect that area. So that might not be a cost that, that you're considering in your, in your numbers, but it will be a significant, uh, a cost for you guys.
Wade, you're next.
Thanks, Warden, and thanks, gentlemen, for, for the presentation. Oftentimes, I mean, around this table, I, I find we're, you know, confronted with, with issues and, and decisions that, you know, don't always feel great, but for me, that this is one that, you know, just is pretty easy, you know, that this, this is a feel-good decision. Um, and, and I know that's not a unanimous feeling, but for me, it is. When, when you look just at the business case, you know, this, this proposal allows the county to retain an asset and, and to Counselor Wrench's point of, or, or earlier point, with, with property values increasing the way they have, traditionally, I'm not sure why that isn't something that we would consider to be a, you know, an advantageous thing. It allows us to improve the asset, uh, at, at no cost to the county, not, not only in terms of hard infrastructure, but in, in terms of, of soil health. So, you know, it, it allows us to retain the asset, improve the asset at no real cost to the county, and then in terms of the spin-off effects, and, and you gentlemen touched on it, I mean, there are, are possible tourism benefits, possible public education benefits, environmental and, and carbon benefits, and, and then the big one in my mind is, you know, how often do we talk about supporting local agriculture? We talk about it an awful lot, but we don't very often do a hell of a lot about it. And this is an opportunity for us to really impact local producers in, in a, in a positive way, again, at very little to no cost to county ratepayers. So I view this as a win-win-win, you know, all day long and, and really don't see any downside at all, so I, you know, enthusiastically support this.
Guy?
Out of curiosity, do we know how many wells are on this property that would need to be addressed? Is, Chris, have you ever...
It's, uh, so I did work on that, uh, 25 years ago plus, so it's, it's, uh, I'm, I'm a bit rusty, I drove by today, uh, and I think there's, uh, just from what I can see from the road, there's at least 16 monitor wells of various depths, but then there's also a large diameter production well that, uh, was constructed at the time to service the, the future landfill, so that, that's one that they could probably actually use, you might not need to abandon it, but there's, um, there are those monitor wells and being in the GRCA area, it may be that there's, there's grants for those, because as you would know, Counselor Gardhouse is, as the representative, the GRCA does sort of have rolling grant programs for, uh, for well abandonments, so, um, but there's, you know, just, there, there are a, a fair number of them.
Yeah, thank you, I, and, uh, I sit on the Grand River Conservation, we're also a, am a member of the Rural Water Quality Program that Dufferin County supports and they have a program to help abandon and seal up the wells. Most of them are, are, I don't know the diameter details, they're about $4,000 a piece in the, if the, if you were acceptable at the Rural Water Quality, they would pay 50% of that, so it gives you an idea for budgeting purposes. And once again, um, I'm going to echo what, uh, Counselor Mills just said, that there's the agricultural perspective of this, which is very important in my mind and where we're at right now, it's like, uh, support Eat Canadian and this is supporting that, but it's all the sideline things of the, the environmental, the tourism, the education, that is just as important and, and all your presentation, um, I get information continuously from the University of Guelph, from conservation authorities and they echo exactly what you presented in here. On your presentation, you should reach out to those guys to kind of do an endorsement for you, just to give you a little more legs, not that you'd need it by any means, and I, I also support this wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Um, one more? Oh, okay, two more then. Darren, sorry, I didn't see you.
Thank you, Warden. Um, yeah, I, I'm going to echo what Guy and Wade said as well, I mean, I think, uh, at its heart, we are an agricultural community and, I mean, this may not be the perfect, uh, perfect example of the use of this property or the scale or the economics or whatever, but I, I mean, we have to start somewhere. Um, my only regret is that we keep kicking this back to council and, I mean, we could have made this decision like five months ago and, and here we are. So can we actually make a decision on it tonight and move it forward, please?
Gail? I'm, I'm coming back to you. Gail?
Sorry, thank you. I too would be very happy if we were able to make a decision on this and move forward. I, I echo the, the thought that of being a win-win-win situation. I see that this land is a form of reserve fund that Dufferin County holds, that will continue to hold and will only increase in value probably and can be used 20 years down the road for some other project if it's, if it desires. But in the meantime, the land will be improved and will be contributing to our agricultural community. Yes, I'm a farmer, um, and I am a beef farmer, so I see the value in this opportunity. I have grandchildren who could greatly benefit from this because right now, they cannot afford to buy an acre in Dufferin County. So I'm, I'm hopeful that they'll, you know, find some other way that they can carry on the enterprise. So I just, um, would like to support this concept and if there was a motion to put forward, I would be happy to do so, or maybe perhaps, uh, my fellow counselor would like, would prefer to do that, but, um, I just see that this is something that is worth moving forward on at, at zero cost to the county and, uh, at a great benefit all around. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Will, um, I'd like to have a mover and a seconder to put the tabled motion back on the floor, um, for discussion, and so I have a mover in Darren and a seconder, uh, with you, um, and I'll just read the motion, that the proposal from the Dufferin Gray Pasture Committee for a pasture farm on county-owned land at 195594 and 195620 Amaranth Grand Valley Town Line be accepted with draft terms as follows: A 10-year lease with an option to extend for five years; The cost of the lease would be equivalent to any property taxes that the county pays for the property annually; The term of the lease to begin May 1st, 2025; And the Dufferin Gray Pasture Committee would be responsible for fencing and preparing the property for their use; And that staff proceed to prepare a draft lease. Any further discussion on this matter? Phillip?
Just a recorded vote, please.
Recorded vote.
Counselor Wrench?
Uh, no.
Counselor Solomon? Counselor Taylor is absent. Counselor White? Counselor Krillman?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Counselor Gardhouse?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Hall?
Yes.
Counselor Hawkins?
Yes.
Warden Horner?
Yes.
Counselor Little?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Mills?
Yes.
Counselor Nix?
Yes.
And Counselor Post?
Yes.
And that carries 26 to 1.
Thank you, folks. I think we can put this one to bed now after five months.
Thank you very much, council, for, for taking the proposal that we're giving and I think we'll be, you'll be proud of what we can do with it.
Will want a tour at some point. Thank you. No stakes, Fred. It'll be...
The first Thursday in July, you come to the Canadian Basin and you tour, probably what we have now, we do serve, uh, beef on the Bund there, so you're more than welcome. Counselor Little here, she's, she's enjoying her, her beef there. And then Counselor Wilton has been there too, 15 years ago.
Okay, thank you, thank you, everyone, and, um, if anybody wishes to leave, I'll, we'll let you do that now and, uh, you don't have to stay, you may, but you don't have to.
We gotta go home and make some plans now.
Night, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, carrying on here, is there anyone in the public gallery that has a question? If so, would you stand, state your name and address? No, seeing none, we will carry on. Uh, just to confirm, there were no questions submitted? Thank you. All right, let's move into presentation and consideration of report. May I have a motion to adopt the countywide transit minutes from March 13th meeting? Move by. Move by Post, second by Gardhouse. Any questions? Yes, Fred?
Sorry, I, I was curious in reading it, what, what happens if we don't get this grant? Are we still running the Orangeville-Shelburne service with county money as opposed to grant money?
Who wants to answer this one? Sonia?
Through you, Warden Horner, uh, we don't know exactly what will happen, but we will look to find an alternate solution if we don't get the grant.
But, but it, it isn't necessarily that the county is going to subsidize, if we don't get the grant, what I really am curious about, the county's paying for this right now, right? They're paying Orangeville to do it? It's not?
No, right now, the county is making a contribution along with Gray County for the service to, to, go ahead. If we are successful in obtaining the grant with Gray and Bruce County, then the amount that we're paying monthly will actually decrease. However, if we don't get the grant, the, uh, program with Gray County is set to expire at the end of June. So we're anticipating hearings shortly around the grant and then if it's not successful, we'll be looking for a different solution.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, um, all those in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Carried. Okay, moving into Infrastructure and Environmental Services Minutes, because Todd is away in Paris, at, at this moment, I'm going to, uh, have to, uh, read through, uh, some of this, uh, committee's, uh, business. Since we received the resolution, uh, from Township of Mulmer that is on desk this evening, we will deal with that item 9.2.3 separately. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes and recommendations excluding the Road Network Rationalization Plan Implementation Update? So we can review the minutes as Counselor Taylor is absent, we will, I will go through the recap. Motion to approve? White and Nix. Okay, um, so the meeting began, uh, their committee meeting began with a delegation from Melankton residents Michael Melhorn and Frank Hayer, uh, presenting a petition to committee to request lower speed limits on County Road 17 and noted safety concerns for the length of County Road 17 from Highway 10 through to the Prince of Wales Road. The committee recommends staff evaluate traffic issues on surrounding roads and report back. The set of minutes that were circulated with the agenda has been amended to clarify the motion to this matter. It now reads that staff be... It now reads that staff be directed to evaluate the traffic issues that are currently affecting Dufferin Road 17, Dufferin Road 19, Dufferin Road 124, and Highway 10, resulting from recent changes to speed limits on Dufferin Road 124 north of Shelburne, and that the review include updated traffic data and consider information from the Ministry of Transportation's Highway 10 review, and that staff report back to council with possible solutions. So that is the recommendation from the committee. Will we need a motion? Sorry. Okay. Okay, so the next item then is the climate action report card, and the first report reviewed was the 2024 Climate Action Report Card. The 2024 achievements were Better Home's Dufferin Energy retrofit program, regional EV charging initiatives, sustainable neighborhood metrics framework, and community-focused projects like the Resilience Hub. On the horizon for 2025 includes a creation of a climate master strategy, enhancing EV infrastructure, advancing community engagement projects, and integrating climate considerations into municipal operations. James?
Oh, thanks, Warden. My question was actually about the previous item. It's a quick one. I just wanted to see if we had an idea of when staff would have that report ready and back to council.
I think we'll turn that over to Mr. Burns.
Thank you through you, Warden. We do have quite the list of safety reviews that's been accumulating, and I don't have the work plan in front of me, but I know that we will start producing results starting in June and throughout the summer, but I can get back to you with something that's more specific. This one probably will be in the earlier list, just because we'll be tacking it on to requests to already look at elements of 19 and 17. So if you'd like a specific date of what we're targeting, I can get that to you, I just don't have it in front of me.
That would work. Thank you.
Thank you. In addition, the committee reviewed correspondence from the Township of Amaranth. Amaranth would support a county southern operations center, provided it could be a facility that is shared, and consideration would be given to a payment in lieu to the The committee received a notice of motion from Councillor White regarding Highway 10 and County Road 17, which will be discussed later in the council agenda. And then the resolution from the Township of Mulmer has been circulated on desk. So we...
I got a question, if we could back up?
Where would you like?
Back up to the Amaranth.
Amaranth? Okay.
And I said, and Chris, I'm picking on you, but I felt the request was dangerous. They want a payment because they're gonna miss out on some property taxes, but my comment at the committee meeting was, okay, Mono has Dufferin County property on its land, Orangeville has quite a bit of Dufferin County property, we don't get property taxes or anything in lieu, so, Chris, with respect, I think your request is a bit dangerous, and I couldn't support it. The committee only received that report, we made no recommendation.
Yep. Yep. Okay, just, anyone else? Any comments on any of the items? I need this motion to be voted on then. All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, that's carried. Just before we go into the next item, yes, today, today, Sonya and I met with our MPP, and we didn't talk about any road safety stuff at all, but there is going to be a meeting with the MTO on May 7 that some of you will be invited to, or have been invited to already. So John has been invited, I believe?
I certainly have heard about it, and I suggested to Michelle that maybe we contact MTO to get copies of the report circulated prior to that meeting, so that we're not simply walking in and being presented with a 200 or 300-page report that we're supposed to digest on the spot.
This is the safety report.
This is the safety report.
Yep, on Highway 10. Moving on to resolution from the Township of Mulmer circulated on desk, and most of you have that in front of you, those of you on the screen, it is requesting the download of Dufferin Road 19 to be paused until a Shelburne bypass is completed. Can we have any discussion that you'd like to have at this point, before we move into the road, before we move any farther? Anyone want to ask any questions about this item? Oh, defer this to? Okay. Okay, Fred, we'll just, just so that, we are going to defer a lot of this, but if you have a question about the letter, we might as well ask it now.
Well, I read it. I find it difficult to support it, but before I make up my mind, what I don't understand about what Mulmer is requesting is, if we were to defer the downloading of that road, that doesn't change the traffic volumes or the speeds. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure what it accomplishes by deferring it, and my worry is, if we start deferring anything in the road rationalization study, the house of cards starts to fall down. That's my worry.
Good point. Sonya, can I just turn this to you for a moment, please?
Sure. Thank you, Warden Horner. In light of this motion from Mulmer, but I think more importantly, after some additional financial analysis from staff, I think I would recommend to council that this entire matter be deferred to a future meeting until there's an opportunity for staff to bring back a subsequent report that clearly outlines the financial impact of this particular initiative, along with some of the additional bigger projects that council has before them to consider over the next few months.
Are you saying defer the whole road rationalization study reform?
Yes.
But not just the Mulmer request?
Through you, Warden Horner, that's correct. Councillor Nix, not for a long time, just in order for staff to bring forward a report detailing some of the financial impacts.
Well, I think, I think we all know there are some really big projects kind of in the pipeline, and we need to probably have a better understanding of what all it might cost and when those costs would occur. And road rationalization is one of several things that will be facing us in the next couple of years. So I think we have to understand how much we can bite off and how much we might have to defer.
Why are you looking at me?
Because you asked the question. Gail?
I would just like to respond to this as well, because I think it's really important, if we're making changes, that we make the change once, and not make a change one way, and then down the road, maybe we've made a different decision. This, the Shelburne bypass issue continues to percolate, and until that's decided, any number of roads could change their status. And to change County Road 19 down to a township road where everybody has to change their address, I know, it's my thing, and then they'll have, if it becomes a county road again, then they have to change their address back again. I mean, let's just make sure we have a solid plan in place before we ask residents to make changes, et cetera. And I don't feel like we do at this point in time. Thanks.
Phil?
Thank you. I'm a little confused, because I've heard ad nauseam that the road rationalization plan has been approved by council. I've heard it multiple times. I heard it at the last committee meeting, saying there is no more room to negotiate. Local councils cannot say they don't want to take a road, the county has made a decision. So I'm just confused as to what we are deferring. We have provided direction. The resolution says that one of the things that staff is gonna need to work on is a plan on how it's going to work. So I'm not quite sure where the deferral is coming from, or what it's going to accomplish.
Through you, Warden Horner. One of the things that is in that motion is for staff to move forward with creating agreements with local municipalities. That would outline how the transition would work, and I think until some of this additional financial analysis is completed, it would be very difficult to actually work on those agreements and to move them forward.
If I may, Madam Warden, that's just part of the process. Right? Like that, I see that as being part of the process, that, okay, but like, there should not be talk about deferral. We've made the decision, do whatever you need to do, take however long you need to take, but this goes on.
Scott?
Through you, Warden. I was actually trying to get the CAO's attention, suggesting perhaps that you expand on the other projects that we're talking about, because this isn't solely the one project, we just have several large projects that will take some financial analysis to determine how they will all fit through. So I didn't know if you wanted to expand on those further.
Through you, Warden Horner. Certainly, I mean, I don't, I think it was at the general government services meeting, there was actually some discussion around requiring some additional work around long-term financial planning, and some of the impacts of the bigger projects that were put forward to council. And so one of the things that the treasurer's been working on is this broader financial report that will lay out the impact of all of the large projects that we're currently considering, not just from a capital perspective, but the ongoing operating impact of those projects. And as you're aware, there are a number of them, and they are significant. You may recall that in this road rationalization report, it also indicates that the cost that the county would have spent on these downloaded roads over the next 10 years was upwards of $14 million. In addition to that, the cost of uploading the roads that are slated to be uploaded is over $8 million. Those are numbers that, prior to receiving the study back from the consultants that we had done as part of this process, we didn't have access to, especially the cost of the uploaded roads. That additional $8 million has a significant impact on the county budget for the next 10 years. And so I think as we move forward with evaluating not only what these agreements might look like, council should probably have information around what the additional financial impacts are of all of the projects that are currently being contemplated. As it stands, and I don't think I'm sharing anything that probably isn't jumping out at you right now, this is beyond the financial capacity of the county right now. And so there are going to have to be some decisions made over the next couple of months as we bring forward this information, to determine which projects make sense and which ones don't. We didn't have all of this information when the road rationalization plan was initially approved, and this is the direction to move forward with implementation. Although the plan was approved, the implementation and exactly all of the details around that haven't yet been approved.
Fred, I'm gonna let Chris comment next. I'll be back to you.
Yeah, thanks. I also don't understand what the value of deferring, because the motion is sort of, doesn't have a timeline associated with it. I kind of agree it's part of the whole process in developing the agreements. I get what the CAO's saying about the finances, but to me, that's part of the agreement process. So we've got a certain amount of money that needs to change hands. We have no, we haven't put any parameters around when that was gonna happen. If, I'm sure there's discussions with the local municipalities that can come to an agreement on terms that are fair for both, like, it doesn't have to be $15 million changing hands in 2025. Doesn't need to be payments over 50 years, but there's probably somewhere in between there that works for everybody. So I, we already sort of hit pause to have the values updated. I'd like to see us continue down the road. No pun intended. Thanks.
Fred?
Point is gonna be quite similar to both Phil and Chris's. All we, we had approved the plan, and we said, go ahead and start negotiating these agreements. If there's a difficult one, or one that has big financial impacts, I mean, there's no time limit on it, maybe it takes five years to negotiate some of these agreements, but I'm thinking in the case of Mono, my suspicion is that County Road 8 probably is not a difficult one to negotiate with the town of Mono. And if we can do it this summer and get that one agreement in place, get it over with, it doesn't hurt anybody else. Why not do it, and then Mono can figure out whether they need to buy a new plow or whatever? But I mean, why stall the process, since the plan has been agreed upon?
Thank you. Scott, and then Darren?
Thank you through you, Warden. Just to be clear, the agreements that are talked about in the report are solely service agreements, so it wouldn't be talking about funding, that's a future decision of council. It would be agreements, let's say, Road 8, for example, we're making that transfer, and Mono doesn't have the equipment to take care of it during that period of time, we would have an agreement in place where we would continue to plow for a certain period of time until you build those resources. With Orangeville, it would be set up the relationships of, you know, the water main would stay with the town of Orangeville, the parks elements of it would stay with Orangeville, those types of things. The financial piece is still completely separate, we would not be talking about those elements.
Darren?
Not a lot of people in the room, staff or council members, who have been on council as long as I did, and I can remember one of the first things we talked about when I was the deputy mayor was a road rationalization study. If we had only just passed it at that point, think of where we'd be now. I appreciate all the advice from everybody and the suggestions, and, I mean, Sonya's comments make a lot of sense. I don't necessarily agree with a deferral, because I think in this case, deferral is subtext for derailment. And that's what I worry about. And I agree that there was no timeline, so, I mean, simply the plan doesn't have to roll forward until the financial analysis is done. So I think, I think the, sort of, the deferral that we're looking for is already built into the motion in the first place, so I don't know we have to do that. But I really worry about, I get the capacity argument, but, I mean, clearly, this is something that staff have been working on for, you know, decades, plural now, and at some point, we have to try to move it forward. And if that means something else maybe should be put on the back burner, that's probably what it means, and that's a different discussion. But I, you know, as for the motion with regards to it from Mulmer specifically, I think if we're gonna talk about stuff like that, then we have to also be doing financial analysis and planning around what the underlying cause of this problem was, and that is not, it's not the speed limit change on County Road 124, that's not the underlying cause. The underlying cause was the need for a sidewalk, if everybody remembers correctly. So that needs to be looked at, and how that can move forward. That would enable us then to adjust the speed limit on that particular road, and that would enable then the problem to go away on its face. So, I mean, if you're gonna look at things, then we need to look at all of the things.
If we don't want to, oh, James, I see your hand, sorry.
Sorry. Just before we move on, Warden, I was wondering, could you provide a little bit of a summary of the conversation that happened around your council table in Mulmer about the concerns? Because I don't want to assume that it's all because of speeding or higher volume on that road, maybe it is, but just to help me understand the reason for the request, could you provide a little bit more detail?
Well, a lot of it is road safety, and the fact that when you talk to some of the tow truck drivers, they've been called about 50 times over the last year out to that stretch of road for accidents, for pulling people out of the ditch, and that's an unsafe stretch of road. We also know that if you're moving Salters and Sanders from our township, or from our county buildings to that road, you have to come up 19. So why... from our township, or from our county buildings to that road, you have to come up 19. So why are you downloading that road if you're having to have a, run a plow up it all the time anyway? So there's really two prongs to the thing. Safety first. There's been at least half a dozen times the fire service has been out to the corner at 19 and 17 for some fairly serious accidents. Again, these are all costs that build up within the community. So safety was number one, though.
Thank you.
So I think I hear in the group that we'd like to proceed and not defer. And so the report to the committee noted an update to the 10-year road and bridge large culvert capital plan. And the next steps would develop any required temporary or long-term service agreements and schedule for concessions to local municipalities and proceeding with any infrastructure transfers. So that's the next step. If you'd like to to move on, that would be the next step of the implementation piece here.
Can we just ask Scott Burns? I mean, I don't want to put him on the spot, but if we don't defer and we go ahead with this, can you comfortably start negotiations with some municipalities this summer?
Through you, Warden. I think we could. I think there might be benefit in having a holistic view just because, and I mean, Counselor White is correct. I've been involved in this project for over a decade now. But there might be value in having a holistic view so that this project doesn't become something that impedes our ability to do something else. And that's, you know, breaks my heart to say it because this project is important. But I just, I think, I think that's kind of the point, just to have all the information all in one place. As far as having conversations with folks, ideally, there wouldn't be so many balls in the air when we're having those conversations. And, you know, whether it starts now or in a month, maybe it doesn't make that much of a difference. I'm not sure. I just, if we start investing resources into it, and for whatever reason, a different direction is chosen, it means we've invested resources into vapor.
Counselor Post?
Warden Horner, thank you very much. Just a quick question. How long of a deferral are we talking about if we do a deferral? Is it a month? Like, will it come back in a month? Yeah, realistically. I think, you know, if we're hearing that from staff's perspective, it would be beneficial for us to defer for a month to ensure that we don't move forward on spending money and it's a 30-day or, you know, whatever, four-week deferral. I think that's a reasonable ask. And I don't think that, you know, I trust staff that it's not going to derail the project. I think at that point, too, we'll have all the information and can make a more informed decision on all of the components of it, and I'm happy to defer.
Through you, Warden. Just to be clear, a lot of people are looking at me for this deferral. This is, this is finance doing a full analysis of all of these big projects that we're talking about. And that's why I'm on board with giving space for that analysis to happen.
Good point. Amy?
Sorry, what was the question?
So how soon can we have this full financial scan?
Through you, Madam Warren. I've been working on this for probably three, four weeks now, and I'm trying to get it done for tomorrow, but I'm not sure if we have all the information yet. So if it's not the next council, it will be the council after that. Yes.
So it would be in May? Perhaps at the latest?
Yes.
Okay. So then, if we go back, we haven't taken a mover and a seconder yet, so we're okay. In discussion with staff, can we have a motion to defer the report until for a month? Maximum of a month? And request a supplementary report to a future council meeting? Lisa, are you moving that? Thank you. Fred, you're seconding it? All those in favor of a month's deferral? Carried. Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Moving to General Government Services, could I have a motion to approve the minutes and recommendations so Chair Creelman can review the minutes? Move by. Lisa, seconded by Guy. All those in favor? Oh, sorry. Go ahead. That last one, I hardly know whether I'm coming or going. Okay, go ahead, John.
Thank you. The first report that we considered had to do with procurement, specifically the first quarter procurement report. And as you can see, there's a number of of studies and procurement items as part of that report. Any questions on procurement as presented? Seeing none. Next item we considered was the learning and organizational development strategy. And this is a strategy that recommends activities, tools, and resources to address organizational learning needs and support performance. A very good discussion about, about the kinds of courses that are offered to employees of the county, both ones which are mandatory and ones which are voluntary. Are there any questions concerning that report? Not seeing any. 2024 Human Resources Activity Report. And this was a report basically on key projects, including a human resources information system implementation, review of the remote work policy, and a wage market review for non-unionized employees. Any questions on that? And these things are budgeted. Next item is 2024 Staff Engagement Survey Results. And this was a report that shows the results of Staff Engagement Survey that took place in November 2024. And I think it's fairly straightforward, but any questions? Happy to answer any questions or ask Rohan to ask, answer any questions. And finally, we have a notice of motion that was passed through our county committee directly to County Council, that having to do with a notice given by Counselor White. And do I read that motion? It's on the agenda for later. Okay, we will consider it later. Thank you very much, everyone.
All those in favor of the motion to approve minutes and recommendations? Carried. Could I have a motion now to approve the minutes and recommendations so Chair Mills can review the minutes of the Community Development and Tourism Committee? Gail, seconded by Darren. Oh, I see Steve's hand. We'll let Steve do this one. Thank you, Steve. Go ahead, Chair Mills. I mean, Counselor Mills.
Thank you, Warden. The first bulk of the agenda dealt primarily with with museum-related items, and the museum services manager presented a number of reports and strategies regarding sponsorship and fundraising. The first report on the agenda was a fundraising and sponsorship strategy that provides an opportunity to generate additional revenue that will serve to improve services, increase attendance, and create new engaging experiences in the next five years. The plan includes steps for increased financial security, enhancing exhibition spaces, updating facilities, creating dedicated program space, detailed fundraising strategies, and implementing specific fundraising strategies for the identified projects that were included. Questions on that one? Okay, the second report was a monetary donations and sponsorship policy, which is designed to enhance the fundraising efforts and to recognize the contributions of supporters. And this policy provides a clear framework to ensure that all sponsorships align with the museum's mission and ethical standards. Third report was regarding establishing a museum endowment fund in partnership with the Dufferin Community Foundation to enhance long-term financial sustainability of the museum. We were joined by a couple of representatives from the community foundation. This fund will be a permanent restricted fund that generates income through interest and investment returns. $750,000 will be transferred from the museum trust fund into that endowment fund. Questions on that one? All right. The next report was a museum naming policy. And this policy provides a standard process and clear guidelines for recognizing the capital infrastructure, external elements, and special program contributions of supporters through naming opportunities. Questions there? All right. The next museum policy reviewed was memorial and plaque policy. And this policy will allow for the museum to recognize significant individuals, events, or contributions with a standardized, consistent approach. And the policy includes the applicable application process as well as the approved criteria and installation, as well as maintenance guidelines. Questions there? Okay. The next one was the report regarding the removal of the Corbetton church pews. So the committee reviewed this report, which, which indicated that in order to increase the accessibility and usability of the church, which is currently limited by those fixed pews, we are looking at removing them, which will improve the ability to rent that space for different types of activities, including weddings, parties, and other celebrations. And the pews will be replaced by folding chairs. And we had a bit of a discussion. Counselor Post wanted to make sure that, you know, we're talking about, you know, cheap plastic folding chairs, that it should be something that kind of is in keeping with you know, the historic ambience of the building. So I think what we're going to look at is, you know, some nice folding wood chairs yet that, you know, will look appropriate in the space. Questions on that? And the last museum-related report was just our sort of regular deaccession report, which we always kind of find entertaining. And for the rest of council, if you haven't had a chance to look through those, I mean, there's some pretty interesting items that are, you know, socked away in storage. This report in particular outlined 117 items that are being recommended for deaccession. Many of them are being offered to other museums that have, you know, more provenance with the individual items. Questions there? Okay. The next one was just a report outlining the ongoing seminar series, which is being hosted by our economic development team. From March through November, there will be a total of five seminars, and these seminars are designed to help support businesses as they navigate the current trade climate. Questions? The next one's coming up. Sorry, Raj, what's the date on that one? May 7th? Okay. Thank you, Counselor Nix. All right. The next report outlined the county's booth, which was held in partnership with the Mansfield Outdoor Center at the Toronto Outdoor Adventure Show. It showcased year-round outdoor activities in Dufferin County and helped to show off the county's unique tourism assets. Staff interacted with attendees over the course of the three-day event and distributed over 550 Explore Dufferin Guides. And staff was also able to conduct the tourism experience survey, which garnered 83 responses. Questions on that one? Okay, and the final report that the committee considered was a report that outlined the need to initiate an official plan amendment number five, which has been brought forward based on conversations with the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. OPA 5 would seek to align growth projections, both in terms of population and employment, with the Ministry of Finance growth projections. These Ministry of Finance projections are expected to lead to a 10% increase in the current existing county growth projections that we have looked at in the past. This increase could have obviously notable implications on current settlement area boundaries. And alignment with the Ministry of Finance projections will be mandated as part of any future official plan update, which will be required five years after the new county official plan comes into effect. Counselor Nix?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions about this one. I'm a bit concerned about it. First of all, when they say ballpark 10% increase, the growth projections they gave us, and I'm going on memory, Raj, we were going from 65,000 people to 95,000, so about 30,000 people by 2051. So I assume the 10% applies to that 30,000. So it might only be 3,000 people increase? Am I interpreting that phrase correctly?
Through you, Warden. So that'd be a 10% overall population increase for the county.
Overall, so instead of 90,000, 95,000 by 2051, it could be 9,000 more people?
Through you, Warden. That's correct.
And then the second, so that's quite a few more people. Well, my second concern is when they say could be, lead to significant settlement boundary area expansion, does that mean Grand Valley, Shelburne, and Orangeville will increase in size? Or what other, are those, is that what they mean by settlement areas, the current service municipalities?
Through you, Warden. So what that would mean is through OPA 5, we would actually go through an undertaking of a land needs assessment. So our current settlement boundary areas that exist within Grand Valley, Shelburne, and Orangeville would be considered as where that growth would likely go. However, the land needs assessment would actually give us the direction as to where that growth could be could go.
Can I just, this isn't so much a question, but here's the concern I have, and I haven't even had a chance to talk to John about this, but we have a couple of big development proposals before it's now in Mono. And one of those is before the Ontario Land Tribunal, it's now before the courts. One is apparently going to the Ontario Land Tribunal. I have no idea what arguments our lawyer is going to make. But one thought I've always had in the back of my mind, under the last population, when the county assigned the population, Mono got off fairly lightly. We basically don't have to increase the number of people we have, and we almost have enough residential lots. So one of the arguments I thought we could make to these two developers is, hey, according to the provincial targets, we're sitting pretty just now. Now, now along comes this 10% increase, and it it gets me worried as to whether we can make that argument or not, particularly when we got a couple of developers sitting there with plans for 356 houses in the subdivision along Highway 9, or, you know, that's what concerns me. Do we have any sense of when this OP number five, or at least when the numbers that are going to go into OP number five, like, when would this work be done? Would we do it internally? Do we have to hire a consultant to do this? Or how do we do it?
Through you, Warden. So the numbers have already been released. They've been released to the Ministry of Finance. So these numbers already exist. So it would be a 10% projected increase for population for Dufferin County as a whole. So what OPA 5 would do as an exercise would be to do a land needs assessment to determine where that growth would go within Dufferin County. And it would be through a consultant, you're correct. But public engagement would also occur. So this is a, it's a lengthy process. It would not be, you know, a couple of months. It would probably more likely over a year and a half to two years.
Okay, so thank, thank you for that, Raj.
That's all my questions, Warden. Thank you.
Chris? Chris?
So the the targets, so what? And what if we don't meet their, their population target?
Raj?
Through you, Warden. Sorry, Counselor Garrett, you're asking what if we don't meet their growth targets?
Yeah.
Well, they're just targets. So
Exactly. So I'm suggesting that we don't worry about them too much. And I would further suggest we don't bother hiring a consultant to do a report. That we handle it in-house, which I believe was one of the things that we as a council were told we were going to start handling in-house when we developed the planning, community development and tourism, and took on the planning function. The, the numbers are meaningless for all intents and purposes. It's not if they're a number, if we don't hit it. So what? Nobody's going to do anything. So
Just, just to step in, I don't think, and Raj, correct me if I'm wrong, the numbers coming out of the Ministry of Finance are not growth targets or growth projections, right?
Through you, Warden. Yes, they are growth projections. And I would actually just like to add, or sorry, comment to your comment there, Counselor Garrett. I understand your, your position that they are numbers, and if we don't meet them, so what? But I would actually encourage council to think of the growth But I would actually encourage council to think of the growth that we are experiencing, irrespective of the Ministry of Finance's numbers or projections or targets. The growth is coming. We are neighboring urban areas, and those urban areas are pushing people out because there is no land to develop in those urban areas. And so as a result, we are seeing an influx of people, as well as people moving to the county, looking for places to live and also places to be employed. So I would encourage council to consider that when thinking of this recommendation that's in front of you.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. I just, I'm not a fan of getting too bent out of shape about a target or a projection from the province that is really quite meaningless. You know, we still have to plan for growth, but separate from getting too concerned about what the province tells us they want to see.
Raj, go ahead.
Through you, Warden. So like was mentioned by Counselor Mills, these projections will need to be considered irrespective of whether or not, you know, we want to be bothered with them now. We will need to consider them when we do make, when we move forward with a new official plan update. So that is also something for council to consider.
In my mind, the big distinction here is, you know, as I said, that these numbers from the Ministry of Finance are not growth targets. So these aren't numbers that the province is telling us they would like us to absorb in terms of growth. These are numbers they're telling us that they think, based on empirical data, we're likely to see in terms of growth. So I think for us to say, ah, the hell with it, you know, we're not going to worry about what these numbers are, is, you know, tantamount to dereliction of duty. I mean, if we're not planning for newly released projection numbers, then I don't think we're in the business of planning at all.
Thank you. Okay. Any, oh, Guy?
Yeah, I like this conversation. I have a tendency to just say, if they're saying there's going to be 10%, we all know what our population is now, so we just start planning for a 10% increase in the next 30 years. And we, right now, we're dealing with affordable housing issues. And so how can we build houses that can accommodate that extra 10% and the 90%, the other 90% that's going to be coming our way also? And it's just a continuous process. When, as the discussion was, when we do our next official plan, we've already got those projections in place, and that they're targets that we will continue to accept and work towards. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Guy. Darren?
I mean, I think we can, thank you, Warden. I think we can all pussyfoot around the issue, but I mean, I think we need to move forward with the study, because one of the things it's going to do, like it or don't, and most, some, most at the table are not going to like it, and others are going to like it, is it's going to show what type of growth, where that growth has to be, in addition to what we've already determined, and it is likely going to spark changes in settlement boundaries. And, you know, then there'll likely be some talk about annexations and whatnot. I mean, it's a fact of life, and, I mean, you just, you can't ignore it. I mean, Shelburne has to grow. They're almost out of land. Orangeville, pretty much out of land. They have to grow as well. So does Grand Valley. So, I mean, we know those things have to happen, so let's just get on with it and do it. I mean, you know, we're just going to pussyfoot around it and tell the province, no, we're not. I mean, if we don't do this, then we're going to be in a position where, when the growth is knocking on the door with U-Haul trucks coming up Highway 10, we have nowhere for them to go, which just makes the problem we're in now even worse. So let's just get on with it and move forward and do it.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, Chris, you've got one more.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to ask Raj to clarify. It's a, the target or projection or whatever is a county one, right?
Through you, Warden. Yes, that's correct. It's a 10% projection for growth for the county.
Thanks.
All right. Seeing no more hands at this moment, are there any opposed?
Sorry, Madam Warden, I did say that was the last item, but I neglected one more. It wasn't a report, but the committee did also just review a resolution that was sent from the township of Amrithe to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, requesting a planning authority be transferred from the county to the township. No action was taken on that.
So seeing no more items and no more hands, are there any, could we have any, are there any objections to approving the minutes and recommendations? Seeing none, that's carried. All right. Could I have a motion now to approve the minutes and recommendations of the Health and Human Services Committee, so that Chair McLean can review the minutes? Moved by. Post, seconded by Hall. Go ahead, Chair McLean.
Thanks, Warden. So we had three reports in our MERC meetings. The first report was from the chief paramedic that outlined response times for 2024. For that year, the Dufferin County Paramedic Service exceeded all targeted response times. So if you haven't had a chance to review the report, I'd recommend you do so. It is positive news. Were there any questions or comments on that report? Seeing none. The next report outlined funding received by Dufferin Oaks. So as some of you may remember, in September 2024, we put forward an application to Ontario Health for $115,490 in one-time capital funding. In December, Dufferin Oaks received $32,318 to purchase equipment. We learned that in March of 2025, an additional $34,425 was received to purchase five new ceiling lifts for residence rooms, which brings the total number of ceiling lifts to 34. So again, another good news story. Any questions or comments on that report? Seeing none. Okay, so our final report was to request approval to sign the Long-Term Care Service Accountability Agreement Declaration of Compliance. Ontario Health requires each health service provider to sign and submit a declaration of compliance with the requirements of the Long-Term Care Home Service Accountability Agreement. So we're looking to move forward on that. Are there any questions or comments on that? Seeing none. That is the end of my report, Warden. Back over to you.
He got off light. All right. So all those in favor of the recommendations in the minutes? Carried. All right. Moving forward to item number 9.6, could I have a motion to adopt the minutes from the March 27 homelessness task force meeting? Moved by. Post, seconded by. Guard House. All those in favor of the minutes? Carried. 9.7, 2024 year-end results, a mover and a seconder to receive the report. Moved by. Nix, seconded by. Hall. Any questions? Fred?
Yeah, okay. Amy, this is where, just refresh my memory. We were going to give the surplus to the reserve that was going to be for the master housing strategy. And now, and I forget how much we, at the time, we thought that was going to be, but now we've got an extra $2 million that we're going to put in that reserve. So how much is going to be in that reserve in total? And then I, I don't know who I asked the question of, but back to the housing strategy plan, like, how much could we build for that? You can't answer that, but I'm just wondering. I mean, this is growing to be quite a pile of money. Is it enough to build an apartment building? That's a lame question, but first of all, Amy, how much money are we going to have in that reserve if we put that extra $2 million in there?
Through you, Warden. The $2 million is the total amount. They'll be in the reserve. Yeah.
Can any, Sonia, can anyone? On staff, tell me how much building we can do for $2 million?
Through you, Warden Horner. Probably not very much. It's important to remember, though, that for the housing strategy, the intention is not for the county to build anything on their own. It's to look for partners.
But $2 million is a nice.
It's a good start.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Carried. All right. Moving on to the monthly update from the outside boards, move in a seconder to receive the report. Moved by. Gail, seconded by. Steve? Steve? Thank you. All those in, any questions on this one? Pretty straightforward. All those in favor? Carried. All right. No strategic plan update this month. Moving on to correspondence. Resolution was received from the Towne and Shelburne regarding opposition of merging the Ottawa-Saga Valley Conservation Authority and the Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority. Counselor Mills, would you like to provide any comments?
Sure. Just very quickly, Warden, I think probably some other municipalities within the county received the same copy of a resolution from NVCA. As I understand it, qualifying that I'm not the member on the authority, NVCA was approached with a proposal from the Lake Simcoe Regional Conservation Authority, pitching the notion of the two entities merging. There was a resolution that came out of NVCA in opposition to that proposal, and our local council simply supported that resolution. There were a number of reasons provided by our representative on the board, as well as our past member who had been on there for several years, and just really didn't think that there was a whole lot of alignment between the two authorities that would benefit anybody from a local perspective.
Yeah, Wade said it a lot better than me, and Counselor Little probably can as well, but it's one of the worst ideas I've heard recently. There, you know, the whole premise of conservation authorities is that it's watershed-based science, so combining two watersheds sort of is, you know, the antithesis of that. They're both very large areas, and Wade touched on it. Like LSRC has some very unique and issues, as does NVCA. They're both vastly different, and I don't see that it's, that is going to help with anything. So Amrithe also did a motion to say that, you know, we're opposed to that. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Little and Counselor Krielman.
Yes, thank you very much. I just wanted to express my appreciation as a member of the executive of the NVCA. I appreciate that all the municipalities in Dufferin have not agreed to this proposal that has been put forward. It was actually put forward by one of our member municipalities that borders the Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority, because they didn't want to deal with more than one authority in their community or whatever. Many of us deal with many authorities, so I see that as not a valid reason. There may have been some other concerns as well. But I would also point out that the NVCA has been undergoing an administrative change, and we have just announced our new CIO that's been hired. We're very excited about that prospect, and we hope to move forward with, in a positive direction. And thank you to all those municipalities who have contributed, as I say, their motions supporting the, no amalgamation, please. Thank you.
Gail, who is your new CIO?
Jennifer Vincent is our new CIO. She will be starting in May. She's currently chairing the Canadian Water Agency, the Ontario Lake Region, and she's very experienced. She started her career as a biologist at the Toronto Region Conservation Authority and has mostly been working for the federal government in various projects since, but has, is incredibly knowledgeable and has this wonderful experience, and I think will be a real asset to NVCA, to our community, and to all of Ontario.
Thank you. Counselor Krielman?
Just a question. Is this something that can be appealed to the province? Can they override the wishes of Dufferin municipalities and force an amalgamation?
You mean the amalgamation? Or the new CIO?
No, I'm talking about the amalgamation. Okay, so.
Darren?
I can't turn mine off, or is...
There we go. All right, I figured it out. So I'm killing myself here, time-wise, by doing this. Under the Conservation Authorities Act, any member municipality without support from any other members can trigger a meeting of all of the members of both municipalities, of both authorities that are involved, to force a vote on amalgamation. And that's what's happening here. Oro Medante has triggered that by suggesting, by, they've gone through the formal process to do that. Now, I think there's widespread, nobody wants to see it happen for reasons Chris and everybody else elaborated, it's two different types of watershed. It just doesn't make any sense. And that being said, if a vote is for or against, the ministry could overrule that vote. They can't overrule the individual municipalities, but if the vote is to amalgamate, they can say, no, we're not doing that. Or if it's to not amalgamate, they can probably say, we are, at the end of the day. But, I mean, right now, it's probably 29 municipalities against and one for, so.
So could we have a motion to receive this correspondence from the Towne and Shelburne, please? Moved by Wade, seconded by Darren. All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, I understand that we have a notice of motion, that Counselor Mills has a notice of motion. Counselor Mills, would you like to read your notice of motion, please?
Sure. Thank you, Warden. I did send a copy of this to the clerk, and I believe the warden saw a copy as well, so I guess this will be on the April 24 agenda. It's regarding the county planning function. Whereas, as an upper-tier municipality, Dufferin County has a responsibility under the provincial planning framework for managing growth and providing guidance on land use planning for the county's eight lower-tier municipalities. And whereas, Dufferin County is expected to grow to over 100,000 people and nearly 42,000 jobs by 2051. And whereas, this growth will increasingly require a broader strategic approach to land use and long-term policy planning within Dufferin County. And whereas, Dufferin County is always striving to innovate and improve service delivery. And whereas, staff have scheduled a planning summit for June 12, 2025, which is intended to provide an overview of the division of planning and economic development responsibilities between upper and lower-tier municipalities, as well as the forecasted growth for all local municipalities across the county. Now therefore be it resolved that Dufferin County Council acknowledges and supports in principle the county's upper-tier planning function as an integral and strategic part of the land use and long-range policy planning processes, and further that council utilize the upcoming planning summit as an opportunity to openly and constructively discuss ways in which the planning function can work more effectively for the benefit of Dufferin County residents.
Are there any other notices of motion at this time? Yes. Counselor Krielman?
Yes, and I have a notice of motion for the next meeting. Roughly as, as I'm going to state, whereas a number of municipalities and others are dropping X, formerly known as Twitter, as a social media tool, as it has become an increasingly toxic and biased online platform, and whereas X has not been widely used, has not been a widely used or effective tool for communication with our residents, therefore be it resolved that the county of Dufferin suspends the use of its X account pending cancellation as soon as practical, and that we make efforts to alert users of our decision while also identifying alternatives.
Thank you, Counselor Krielman. So we'll look forward to those motions at our next meeting. We now are moving on to item number 13, which is a motion that has been put forward by Counselor White. And Counselor White, I'd like you to read your motion, if you could, because it is very long.
Well, I apologize. So I'll read the motion. Whereas traffic volumes have increased substantially on provincial Highway Number 10, as well as cross-traffic from Dufferin County. from Dufferin County Road 17, whereas this intersection is controlled only by east and west stop signs, whereas this intersection has, has no turning lanes in either direction causing traffic to pass on the shoulders and in other unsafe manners, and whereas there are limited visual cues for upcoming stop signs and no other mechanical interventions to alert motorists to an upcoming dangerous intersection, and whereas there have been multiple fatalities, numerous personal injuries sustained at this intersection, whereas this intersection is among the highest in accidents and near miss incidences in Dufferin County as indicated by data from the Ontario Provincial Police, therefore be it resolved that Dufferin County public work staff be directed to have discussions with the Ministry of Transportation specific to initiating safety upgrades within the functional footprint of the intersection of Provincial Highway 10 and Dufferin County Road 17 in the Township of Mollankton, and that a report be brought forward to the May 8, 2025 Dufferin County Council meeting that details discussions and upcoming actions to improve safety at that intersection, and that this motion be additionally forwarded to the Township of Mollankton, the Ministry of Transportation Premier Doug Ford, Member of Provincial Parliament Sylvia Jones. So that's the motion that is in the agenda. That being said, given a motion that was in the agenda earlier specific to highway traffic safety and whatnot, and the fact that there is a meeting on May 7 to receive and discuss the Highway 10 safety study, I, I'm not going to withdraw the motion because I, I don't know what's in the traffic safety study yet and I'm not willing to withdraw it until I see that and can digest some of that. I am, however, willing to table the motion to the May 25 meeting for consideration then or further action then. I think that's probably in the best interest rather than force it to a vote tonight. I think there is some duplication. There's already some things happening. So I'm, I'm happy to ask that it be tabled to May 25 for discussion.
Okay. Do we need a motion to table? We'll need a motion to table then. Move by Darren, seconded by Lisa. And we will revisit this then on May 8 or?
25.
May 25, okay. The MTO meeting is May 7, so that will give us some time.
Yeah.
Thank you. All those in favor? Carried. All right. Next one. Following motion was submitted as a notice of motion by Counselor White to the March 27 General Government Services Committee. Whereas Dufferin County Council has identified a number of issues that may require and benefit from provincial advocacy from our Member of Provincial Parliament, MPP Sylvia Jones, and whereas Dufferin County Council believes discussions on issues, including potentially items that require discussion in closed session, would be valuable, therefore be it resolved that Dufferin County Council invites MPP Sylvia Jones to attend County Council for discussion on local issues. So before we ask for a seconder of this, on this motion, Sonia and I were invited today to Sylvia's office and we did discuss some items and we made it very clear that she needed to appear before this group and she has promised to do that at our, at Thursday evening meeting as soon as she can make her agenda match ours. So that's where we're hoping that it will be sooner than later and she will not be interested in appearing in a closed session as that is not, it will not be happening. It would be in an open session with all of council. Anything more? We discussed, just so you know, we discussed housing. We discussed the potential hub here. We discussed our investment attraction, efforts that we have coming up and how we might align with the government on their tariff response. And, oh yes, and transit grant. We, we talked about a lot of things and we actually went over time and she wasn't in a big hurry to rush us out the door. So she does want to come and we told her it was past due, her getting here, so. Okay, so if, if it's, do you want to withdraw this thing, please?
No, I don't, actually. So, I mean, the motion speaks for itself and I, and I certainly appreciate her willingness to come and I applaud you for going and talking to her. I know when I was a warden, we were invited, you know, usually once a, a year for a 15 or 20-minute speed chat. And, but at, at the end of the day, I mean, the things you talked about are great. They're all important things to talk about, but you did indicate earlier in the meeting that one of the things you didn't talk about, I guess time-wise, was Highway 10 safety?
We did not.
Traffic safety and whatnot. And those things need to be spoken about. I don't expect her to sit in a closed session, but things that we have been discussing, some things in closed session may require additional discussion with her is what maybe the wording needs to be changed there. But I, I don't want to withdraw the motion because, and it's not a knock on Sylvia, everybody or Sylvia Jones, everybody can have their opinions or whatnot, but with her role as the deputy premier and the Minister of Health, she is increasingly difficult to get hold of, increasingly hard to get her to come and talk to us. And I think it's important that this motion still be put to a vote, so it would indicate that we really want you to come. I'm, I'm glad that she has tentatively looked at a, a Thursday evening meeting, which I think is fantastic, and this motion just serves to backstop that.
So we'll need a seconder for your motion and I am removing a line here, just it's a part about the closed session. That's all. So Fred, you're seconding the motion. All those in favor of the motion? Oops, sorry. John?
I, I was just going to say, I think it's very important that the full County Council vote on this to send a signal that, as has been indicated, a, a sit-down with us is long overdue on a discussion of our issues, which I'm, I'm sad to hear that traffic safety was not one of the issues talked about today because to me, it's top, it's top of mind.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion? Carried.
Philip had his hand up.
I didn't see that.
Oh, he's fine.
You're okay? Okay. All right, there will be no closed session. May I have a motion for bylaws 2025 to 20 through 2025-23 inclusive to be read a first, second, and third time and enacted? Move by. Gardhouse, seconded by Post. All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none. Do any of members of council have any other business? Counselor Nix?
This is not on the agenda, but I had a question. There's two items I heard over the last two days that make me wonder how we're doing with our search for another doctor in this region. First of all, I heard an item on CBC about the number of American doctors who are now looking for physicians in Canada. But the second and more important thing was, I heard this afternoon that Sylvia Jones herself has announced X million dollars for, and she has a list of postal codes of where doctors are most needed in Ontario. I guess my question was, is our, no, no answers?
We're not on the list.
We're not on the list.
We're not on the list. We're not underserved and if you look on the news, there's a map that has been printed about which areas are going to get it and, and we are not on it.
Sonia, do we happen to know if that consultant we hired, I mean, I have no idea how many American doctors are looking for physicians in, in Ontario, but some apparently are.
I think that's yet to be seen. Anybody else, any other business they want to discuss at this time? Seeing none, we'll keep going. May I have a motion for the confirmatory bylaw 2025-24 to be read a first, second, and third time? Move by. Gail, seconded by. Shane. All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none. Next meeting will be the new meeting structure and we will meet here April 29 at 9:00 a.m. and that's everyone will be here. April 24?
Yeah.
Yeah, at 9:00 a.m. And so we're just going to try it and it will be a work in progress and we'll hope that you have lots of patience by the time we figure it out. May I have a motion to adjourn? Guy?
Still waiting.
Guy?
While waiting.
And James. Thank you, everyone. Meetings...